Invite you to stand with me and we'd like to begin with a word of prayer and then if you would remain standing and join us in the pledge to the flag. Let's bow together. Father, we glorify you. Thank you for your blessings for this day, for the opportunities you've put before us. Help us to be wise in the decisions that we make. Help us to honor you in everything that we say and do in Christ's name. Amen. Join us in the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have two commissioners out. One is expected at any moment. The other one is out on a doctor's visit, but we do have a quorum so we can move forward with the agenda, I think. We do appreciate so much your attendance today and your interest in the business of our county. We have no scheduled public hearings, but we do have public comment from citizens scheduled, and that's from Robin Thompson. So, Robin, if you would, we'll ask you to come to the podium here and share with us what's on your mind today.
Okay. My name is Robin Thompson. I wanted to come before the commission just to bring up something that we're dealing with in our neighborhood that we're hoping for some help. We live in Lovango. We've got, currently, there's a pack of eight dogs that are going around killing everything. I understand that there's not a leash law in the county and I understand that they're, you know, that may not be feasible, but we're looking for some sort of help. I'm, my husband works off a lot. I don't feel comfortable going to the person's house that has eight dogs that's killing, you know, I mean, we're talking, I know for certain seven to eight dogs and a multitude of cats, and this is just within a quarter mile of my house.
You're saying that many have been killed by this?
Yes, yes. But I know for certain these, I mean, it's on video. Mr. McGahay has some videos of, that we can show if need be, but we're, we're struggling. I mean, I just, I don't know what to do. And like I said, you know, there's been, you know, seven, eight dogs, but there, I feel certain that there's more 20, maybe more dogs that have, people's pets that have, that have died. We, my, my daughter can hear them across the street, you know, mauling animals from her bedroom. I have a, my father has dementia. Every now and then he slips out and he might be walking the neighborhood. I, I don't, you know, I'm, I'm real nervous about when they're gonna stop attacking dogs and cats and start attacking people.
Does the same residence own the, the pack that's going around? Is it one person owns all of them or is it just a bunch of dogs that's gathered up?
Um, the, the, the pack that I'm specifically talking about is three adult dogs and five puppies, five of, one of those dogs' puppies. They do all belong to the same person. Like I said, I don't, you know, you would think the neighborly thing to do would be go, say, hey, your dogs are killing my dogs or your, you know, they're, they're attacking dogs in the neighborhood. I'm not going into a yard that, you know, of, with that many dogs that are going out and killing things. I don't know if they're gonna attack me. I don't know if that owner's gonna attack me. So, when I have to let, I have a hundred pound pit bull. When I let her outside, I have to walk outside with a pistol because I, I have to protect her. I have to protect myself and it's, it's hard. I, I don't, that's not, you know, my normal nature is to walk outside with a pistol in my hands, you know. Am I missing?
Julie's already been attacked before.
Julie was attacked, our dog. She's a hundred pounds. She's a big baby. She was attacked last May, so, you know, we have vet bills. She was almost killed if Marty wouldn't have been able to run out there and break that up. She would have been killed. They killed my cat that same week. So, I mean, we have personal, personal damage as well, not, not that just neighbors. I'm, I'm mostly speaking for my neighborhood, but we, so, and this is, that gives you a timeline too, that it's been going on for over a year.
They're breaking in on porches.
Uh, yes. Property damage.
Animals are being closed. They'll go tear the screens up or knock windows out or whatever.
And it wasn't just a screen porch that they tore up. They tore up vinyl and they, they ripped the guy across the street's port up and killed his kittens that were, that he had housed there. So, they, um, that back porch, one of the videos, the, you can see the dog get up on the back porch and that porch is, I would say, probably three and a half, four feet off the ground.
Maybe four feet, yeah.
And the dog got up there and ripped, whipped that little kitty around.
Grabbed the cat, swung it around and threw it and then the rest of the dogs run around.
Yeah. He did survive, though.
He did, okay.
Yeah.
And Marty had mentioned that, you know, for a while y'all were thinking, well, maybe coyotes are getting the pets. Not, not that you can prove that these dogs did, but, I mean, evidence speaks loudly that this is a possibility of, you know, all the pets that's been missing over the, at least a year, maybe longer. Could be because of this pack of dogs, not necessarily coyotes.
Right. And I would like to come to you with a solution. I don't, I don't know the, the law and the guidelines well enough to give you a solution, but if you could just give me some feedback as to something that I could, you know, that can be done to, to help us.
Well, Ms. Robin, this, this has been an ongoing issue. It comes before us periodically. It sounds like it's ongoing in your community, but in various spots across the county. And for many, many years, our answer would be, we really don't have an opportunity, we don't have options to respond to it. But I think that maybe there is at least a route that can be considered now. It takes a little time. It's not an instant response. I'd love to get Ms. Morgan to share briefly with us that are here, what that opportunity is, and then the commission can bring that back up hopefully at a later meeting to discuss in some detail and, and make decisions on how to move forward, so.
Okay.
On a limited self-governance option.
Okay. Um, so, just, just to make sure I'm starting and, and starting us all off on the same foot, you know, there is no, there's no authority that this body has today to help with this situation. You know, if you were to try to take a vote and go take some action today, there's, there's nothing I can arm you with to be able to take that step. However, there is a law called the Alabama Limited Self-Governance Act that was passed several years ago and gives counties the ability to move forward with some ordinances in the arena of animal nuisances. And so that may be a path for you all to look into. I do have to share with you that there are a lot of procedural steps there, so it would be the only way that I'm familiar with to get this body in a position to be able to offer any type of assistance to the citizens in the unincorporated area. But the process, step one of the process is for the issue to be put on a ballot and be voted on by those in the unincorporated area to first give this body any authority in that arena. And so, then assuming that that passes, after that, the body would then be able to adopt an ordinance and determine, you know, what that needs to look like, what enforcement needs to look like. So, step one is getting the question on the ballot and then getting a favorable response from the voters in the unincorporated area.
Let me ask you a question. At one time, a number of years ago, when that kind of first became an op, option, it looked at a precinct by precinct result. Do you know if that is the case? In other words, could the precinct that she's in say yes and Heath and Strawn say no and it could be implemented just within that precinct?
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know, but I'd be happy to look into that. I don't know.
Do check on that and see, and that may. So, what she's saying is on the November ballot, if we, if we chose to, the commission could put this issue on the ballot and move forward with seeing how, how the citizens respond. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Lynn, what you got?
First, let me apologize for being late. Sometimes when you spill your coffee, you have to go back and change again. But I do sincerely apologize. We discussed this, hasn't been that long ago. We've had two others that's been in with the same complaint. And I think then, I don't know if you were with us on the first round or not, because I can't remember, but we already had gone through most of that trying to decide then what the issue, what we needed to do. And I know we never made a decision, but it has been a continuing problem. And I know even the sheriff got involved with what it'd be necessary for him to have to have, to be able to, to take care of it because it falls back on your department, I believe. So, that was my two cents worth.
And any way I can help on that process, I mean, I don't know what I can do to help, but please do loop me in and I-
We will, we'll, we'll, I'm sure there'll be opportunity. If you're gonna put an initiative on the ballot, then there, there needs to be those that are for and against it, have an opportunity to publicly state their position and why they're concerned for it or against it, and so there will be opportunity.
And I know it's a fine line as well because you don't want people to, if my dog's in my yard, you know, you don't want somebody just driving by and saying, oh, that one looks like a nuisance and, you know.
And therein is the complication of how do you, how do you-
Right.
That's what I can say, that was some of the kind of discussion of who's gonna deem it a threat, because I have one that's in my yard that may run up there and bark a little bit, but if you whistler it or call its name, it's gonna lay down and wag its tail because it's wanting you to play, but then, so that'd be something that we'll all have to kind of look at and I think maybe we'll come up with something.
And maybe it can be, I, I know, I know that I, I generally contact somebody and if there's maybe a few calls about the same animal or, or something to that effect.
Repeated calls over the same animals.
Yeah, yeah. And if, and if we have-
In this circumstance, you can look at the video and you can't deny that this is a pack of menacing animals. And I understand that my interpretation of law is if you feel threatened by an animal on your property, you're supposed to be able to protect yourself, your family, your belongings. Anywhere I see these dogs, I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm gonna kill them.
Well-
They, they've owned enough families, the foots across the street, they've lost six dogs with this one pack of animals.
And, and the issue, generally, most of us that are seeing these attacks, we're seeing it on our cameras while we're at work. So, we're watching our, our animals or we're watching our neighbor's animal be mauled when we can't get there, you know, and, and, I mean, if we had some sort of backup.
Well, as Lynn said, it's been an ongoing problem. We've had some conversation, the, the idea of moving forward with, of putting it on the ballot, I think it would be the logical next step and the, I think that we're gonna ask Morgan to lay out what that looks like and what our opportunities are, our options, and then we'll have discussion about how restrictive or broad we would want that to be. The limited self-governance law opens the door for some other opportunities, not just animal control, that the commission would need to address, whether it's litter control or other areas that we could, that we could adopt ordinances. So, if that passes, then, then that opens the door for us, the commission, to adopt ordinances on a case-by-case basis. So, there's, there's a lot involved, something the commission has not typically been involved in in the past, so it's new, new ground for us. Sheriff, I know, responds to these sorts of calls regularly. I would assume your hands are somewhat tied if somebody feels threatened by them because they're killing the animals.
Our hands are tied and also when we get the call and we go out there, we, we, the dogs are backed up on private property or the owner and everything, there's a, I wouldn't call it a fence, I'd call it a, there's a jump pile around the property. And actually seeing them in the property and everything is a, is, is a problem, but we do get these dogs. We've set traps. I went out there on several occasions to try to catch these dogs and, and at least put them in the pound and notify the owner. So, we, we've been trying, but we don't, it's just hard to be at a bunch of places at one different time. We want, we, we want a solution to this just as much as you guys do. So, I'm, I'm willing to do whatever it takes to, to make it happen.
Okay. We appreciate you being here today. Appreciate you bringing this. Sorry that you guys are having the problem and hopefully we'll be able to take steps to address the problem moving forward. Next is the awards and presentations, and Sheriff, you're on for this and we'll invite you to the podium.
Back on March 10th, Corrections Deputy Joshua Martin was on routine, he was working routine at the county jail. He had to deal with a, with a inmate. That inmate attacked Joshua Martin, causing him great, great damage. But Joshua Martin stayed in the fight and he prevented that inmate from hurting anyone else. There were a couple of nurses in there that he could have very well got to. The inmate, his, his reason for doing it was he wanted to get out of there. He was trying to leave the premises and Joshua Martin stood in the gap and he prevented that and it, it cost him a great deal. And Joshua, have you come up here, please? This is Joshua Martin. He's one of my corrections deputies. And I'm very proud of him. I'm very proud that he, he did what it took to prevent someone else from being hurt. He did his job and then some. And the citation reads as like this, "Being known that Corrections Deputy Joshua Martin has served with honor, commitment, and extreme bravery while serving the Covington County Sheriff's Office. On March 10th, 2024, while on duty at the Covington County Jail, Deputy Martin was brutally attacked by an inmate. During the attack, Deputy Martin sustained horrific injuries where a normal person would have given up. Deputy Martin stayed in the fight and prevented the inmate from causing injury to others and was able to secure the inmate. This act of bravery comes at a great cost, a cost that Deputy Martley, Deputy Martin paid selflessly. The actions of Deputy Martin have earned him the Covington County Sheriff's Distinguished
Joshua, wanna make speech? This is your chance.
I just wanna thank everybody for presenting me this award. It's very, it's very nice and I was just doing my job, but I'm glad I was able to stop him from hurting anybody. And I'm, but I tell you, I'm still blessed. I can see out of one eye, so I just thank God for that.
Absolutely.
And I thank everybody.
Thank you, thank you, please. Thank you, Sheriff. Next is a comment from other elected or appointed officials. You have anything for us?
No.
Except, is there a runoff election?
April 16.
April 16, so it's not far off. Encourage everybody to turn out and vote. Mr. Patterson?
Yes, sir. I was gonna just quickly give y'all a list. I came in a little late. I apologize for that.
It's okay.
I was trying to get some things together. I was gonna give you a list, but I have 500 parcels that has not been paid to 236,000, so we're, we're down on the money, but it's just that we're gonna make every effort we possibly can do to find these people, so if you know of a neighbor or a friend or a relative that might know some of these people, then please hit some messages out. We're gonna put it on Facebook today. We posted on Facebook, you know, we're just gonna give it to everybody in the county, a list and try to, and let the store news probably have some information as well.
And you're changing, are you changing sell, the sell method when-
We are. It's a good question. If you got time for me to tell you just a minute about that. We're going from the tax sale that we have out on the steps of the courthouse to a gov e, and we've posted that website on our Facebook and our webpage, and you will go on and you will get pre-certified to bid on the property. And on May 21st, you will be online and the property will be listed online for sale. And what they're gonna do is they're gonna, you'll be, if me and Blake wants to pay the property real bad that we're both bidding on and Blake goes to 0% interest, he'll take 0% interest on this money and I'll take 0% interest on my money. The computer generates a number between me or Blake on who wins that tax sale.
So, it's a random draw if you happen to be tied?
That's correct, thank you. It's a random draw and it's fair and it's much easier.
Okay. Chuck, how do these people get certified? They have to go to the local bank and say, okay, they're certified at this amount or?
That website gov e, pre, pre-approval, so if they'll go on there, they're gonna ask them certain questions that they have to answer. They'll probably give them a credit card number and that sort of thing, a routing number, and then from there, they will be approved and you're able, like, one month before the tax sale, you'll be able to start viewing the property, which is gonna be soon. And hopefully, we have no property for sale on May 21st is my ultimate goal.
Good deal. So, can they bid, I'm sorry, Chuck, can they bid prior to that or they have to start?
Yes, they can start bidding.
As soon as the property comes to-
That's correct.
Okay.
And then it's gonna keep up with me and Michael and Blake. If we're all bidding on the same property, it's gonna keep up which property is, and if you want 6% interest, there's 12% is the interest on it. So, that's what's gonna be negotiating is the 12 down to zero, you know, if you don't want interest on your money.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Next, under this section, we want to invite Jacob Morgan up to the podium to give us a brief update on economic development status, and Jacob is with Covington County Economic Development Commission and has been working there for how long, Jacob?
About eight, eight, 10 years almost.
How many?
About 10, I think. It's been a while.
Good deal. Appreciate you being with us today.
Yes, sir. Of course, last time I was here, a couple months ago, we had a big project in the works that has come to pass and with Connecticut Sausage being here, I do want to thank the commission as well as our mayors and other elected officials. It wouldn't be as easily done if it wasn't for their efforts and they have been very helpful in meeting their needs and making sure that they got started and so I just wanna thank y'all for that and being a part of that. That's, that's a big deal for our area and I'm thankful for all the people that have participated in that. One thing that we've gotten from that is, of course, we have the governor here, Ellen McNair, this is the head of the Department of Commerce that took Secretary Camfield's place. They both have commented to us that very rarely, what, what has really stood out to them about coming down here the other day was the unity of our area, that the, the county, the city, all working together is something they do not see. And so, for us, the next project that comes across their desk that think might be a good fit in the wire grass, they're gonna think about Antoliusian. They're gonna think about Covington County. They're gonna, they're gonna think about, you know, well, maybe we could put that in offer, you know, what about Florella? They, they're gonna think about our towns and they're gonna think about this place and that, that is big for us. And we have gotten calls all over the world about this project, so that's been really good. And confidentially, we are submitting for another one today that possibly may turn into something good, I hope, so we're, we're working on that and we still are making a strong push in forestry. That is something that I discussed at our last meeting. It's, it's such a, a key feature of our area. We have so many, so many trees that are just primed to be used by some type of mill, whether it be a OSB oriented strand board or some type of sawmill, plywood mill. We have, we have businesses here that work with that kind of material that they would even benefit from if, if something like that was here. It, it would really pay off for the whole area, so we are, we are strongly, strongly pursuing that. But we have, have a good year planned, a lot of good things happening and we love Covington County. We love to be here. By our opinion, it's the greatest place on earth and once people come down here and see it and they get out and then look around here, they, they realize, you know, why it, it's so special and it's a, it's just a, even though it's raining, it's a great day in Covington County. So, thank y'all all for being here and appreciate your time.
Thank you, Jacob. We appreciate what you do.
Thank y'all.
Yep. We have no old business carried forward to today's meeting, so let's move on to new business. And we'll, we'll, we'll take a 10-minute recess in about 10 or 15 minutes unless we're right about through, but for those of you that have hung around with us that would love to slip out, we'll make it easy for you. Give us about 10 minutes, so. Or if you need to leave, you're certainly welcome to slip out as we conduct business. Consider approval for the opioid settlement participation, Commissioners Page 3, 4, and 5 in the packet, and I'll ask Karen to tell us briefly about this.
This is a settlement that's an ongoing issue that's been before you before. There was a statewide push that Morgan's more familiar with from our association to capture some of the opioid fund settlements and different companies that they've, I guess, litigated against and they've reached different settlements. The one in front of you is an agreement that they were presenting to us from a company that was gonna be over a 10-year time period for payment. And so, we just need to get y'all's approval to participate in this at this time to receive some of these funds.
The cases in the opioid, not pandemic, yeah, the litigation efforts, they're spread, there are multiple companies involved, multiple jurisdictions, and we signed on to participate in those and several of those have already paid off, others are stretched, as you said, over 10-year, 15-year paybacks, and this is just one of a number of them that are on the table. Anything you want to share relative to this?
Only that this is one that requires 100% participation from all cities and counties that are involved in the state, so in order for those ones to flow, everyone has to sign on.
So, with that in mind, is there a motion to approve this MOU?
I'll, I'll make a motion because I know we've got a pretty good settlement from the other ones. It'll be very beneficial down the road, so.
Okay.
And I second.
Motion second. Anybody have questions on it? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sound. All right, that carries. Then let's move on to the memorandum of understanding with South Central Alabama Mental Health Board. I'm gonna ask Karen to again give us the overview of this.
Judge Brooks contacted me and she would probably be able to present this better.
Judge, you want to address it? Good deal.
Mental health is an issue in our county and I deal with that a lot in my court. And South Central Alabama Mental Health has received grant funding to implement crisis response teams, and this is a memorandum of understanding with the Sheriff's Department, so if their officers are out with an individual who's suffering from the symptoms of mental illness, they can reach out to one of these crisis teams and the crisis team can go on scene to try to talk the individual down and to, to address the issues that the individual is having. The, the goal is to limit the amount of mentally ill people that we have to take to an emergency room because they're not necessarily equipped with mental health professionals at the emergency room. And it's to limit the number of mentally ill individuals we have to take to the county jail to try to get them some help. So, implementing these crisis teams will, they'll be on site, they'll meet with the patient. It will be people who are trained professionals in the mental health business and then they can set up services for them there on site and maybe we can avoid some arrests and avoid some trips to the emergency room.
Just wondering, if, if, let's say there's already been an arrest take place and they've shown it, will this team be able to respond to the jail if they happen to be incarcerated on?
I did not ask that question, so I don't know the answer to that. I know that what happens now is Blake's guys, they'll call me. And, you know, several years ago, there was a local act implemented that will allow law enforcement individuals, if, if they think that it's related to a mental illness, they can take them to the hospital and get them some help. If they do end up in jail because they're charged with something, we have a process where we can contact the mental health center and they have a therapist that comes over and meets with the individuals. And then the courts have been really good. If it's someone who's truly mentally ill- If it's someone who's truly mentally ill, nine times out of 10, those charges will either be dismissed or dropped and we get them into a mental health facility, a long-term hospital or something for treatment. You know, sometimes what will happen is the judges upstairs will do an order to release them from jail. We'll do the involuntary mental commitment in my court. And then once they're stabilized, we send them back to jail. But these crisis teams will get them help on the front end. And they're going to work, um, the mental health center has opened a urgent care facility over on Montezuma. They're open right now from 2:00 to 10:00. They plan to use some of this funding to make that facility open 24/7. That's been really good with the jail. I know Blake, uh, Blake will have inmates taken there. They can see a psychiatrist. Um, they have some really good nurses there who have a lot of background in psychiatric care. And they get the individuals in the jail, the, the treatment that they need. They get their medication and they can come back to the jail.
You said like the crisis team will go to the same?
Mm-hmm.
So we'll have a crisis team basically in Covington County?
They will have a team on call.
Okay.
And so when something happens, if Blake and his officers are out, they can call that team. If, if someone calls a hotline and the team is notified that someone's, there's an emergency situation and the team needs to go, they'll reach out to, to Blake and his officers and, and they can accompany them there. It's similar to what they do with DHR. When DHR, when they, those DHR workers go out, nine times out of 10, they're accompanied by law enforcement.
So this is good from the sheriff's perspective? It's positive?
It is, it is. Uh, the way I look at it, it offers a great chance of keeping people out of jail and getting the help that they need.
Okay.
Uh, also, uh, you mentioned the tablet.
There, some of this grant money, they're working, um, is it there at Oklahoma?
I believe so.
They, they're working to, um, acquire iPads. They're, they're locked down iPads. All they will have on them is this software where, um, the law enforcement will have one in their patrol cars. And there's just a red button that you click and they can get a therapist, like, on the screen where they can talk to, um. I was trying to think of what you do when you call on your cell phone, FaceTime, FaceTime on the pad so that they can speak with the therapist. And then you'll also have these crisis teams that can respond.
Very good. Commissioners, what are your thoughts? Any questions for the judge or comments?
I'm like, like your book says, that's, the mental health crisis is a big thing across the whole United States, so anything we can do to
If, it affects a lot. When, when there's an emergency situation with a mental health person, you're talking about, you know, um, ambulance service, hospitals, law enforcement, there, it, it, there's just a lot. And then we get into my court and we'll end up having two or three hearings trying to get these people the help that they need. Sometimes it's a situation to where they just need a few minutes. They need someone with the proper training to talk to and try to settle things down. And then they're willing to go get treatment.
Will either probate or the sheriff's office track uh, impact or response so that we know the effectiveness of it? So that when the federal funds probably dwindle, that we'll know whether we wanna continue that with local funding?
Mental health will. Part of this grant is they're tracking the numbers.
Okay. So they'll have that.
Yes.
And also, I need to say, that tablet, you know, it's not only for the, the person that's having a mental challenge right then. If you have a police officer that's having a bad day and he's thinking of things, there's one right there, there's a blue button.
First responder button.
First responder button.
And, and they, we had a meeting this pa, last week and they told us that their, their goal was for someone to answer that tablet within three rings.
Really? Okay.
And, and they told us the numbers from where they had implemented this service in Oklahoma and they were very impressive.
So this proposal is between the Covington County Sheriff's Department and the county commission and South Central Alabama Mental Health Board. Requires no funding from us, just a commitment to the program. So commissioners, what are your wishes?
I'll go ahead and make a motion.
All right.
To participate.
We have a motion to enter the MOU?
Second.
And a second? Questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Well, let's put Karen back on the spot since she blew that one off. We'll move on to page 16 in the packet. It's a consider change to workforce classification. Uh, Karen?
Okay. On this, um, particular item, we had, uh, or I had asked previously for a public information officer to be considered at a part-time basis. I'm asking for you to consider changing that to a full-time basis and allow us to hire a full-time public information officer.
Okay. Uh, commissioners, you see the, uh, description that she's asking us to consider?
Changing from?
Changing, so this one is the original one?
Yes.
So changing it to full-time, okay. And, uh, the expectation is that, that, that individual would be under the administrator's oversight? Is there a motion to change workforce classification as requested?
Make a motion, change it.
All right.
Second.
Motion second. Anybody have comments, questions on that? All right. We'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, same sign.
And I will say, make sure all the department heads know this person is available to them also. It just comes back to.
Absolutely. This, uh, I definitely want to get the advertisement out quick so that maybe there'll be a lot of interest and we can get some good applicants.
Let's take a five-minute recess, just five minutes. We wanna grab some water or something and thank y'all.